We do have a few people out there checking in, so I just want to be sure they have time to get in. Ladies and gentlemen, if you would please take your seats. If I could ask the tellers to please come forward. And in order to be counted, all voters must be seated, so those of you that are still straggling in, if you could please make your way to your seat. I want to remind you that when the voters take their count, you should hold up your voting card. You should hold it up high. Do not hold it at your shoulder level or waist level. Do not tear it in half. And do not lose it because that's the only one that you're going to get this evening. Do not put your cards down until the tellers have counted and told you to put them down. Tell us if you would please take a count. Please raise your hands. The tellers will count. In the front?
Section 137.
Section 137, to my right?
Section 219.
Section 219. In the center?
Eighty.
Eighty-eight-zero, and on my left?
Thirty-six.
Thirty-six.
Thirty-six. We have 172 voters present. We have a quorum. And we have a quorum to act on all money articles over $5,000. Quorum being present, I will now call this meeting to order, and I'll ask the clerk to read the return of the warrant.
Commonwealth of Massachusetts, Plymouth SS, to either of the constables of the town of Wareham, greetings. In the name of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, you are hereby directed to notify and warn the legal voters of the town qualified to vote in town affairs to meet in Precinct 1, Wareham Town Hall, 54 Marion Road; Precinct 2, Ethel B. Hammond Elementary School, 13 Highland Avenue onset; Precinct 3, Minnetonka Forest Elementary School, 63 Minnetonka Ave., Wareham; Precinct 4 and Precinct 5, John W. Decker School, 760 Main Street, South Wareham; Precinct 6, Wareham Lodge of Elks, 2855 Cranberry Highway, East Wareham, on Tuesday, April 2nd, 2013, at 8:00 a.m. for the election of town offices designated in the official ballot, to be adjourned until Monday, April 22nd, 2013, at 7:00 p.m. in the high school auditorium, 7 Viking Drive, Wareham, Mass., at which time the general business of the town shall be transacted and to act on the following articles.
And we will waive the reading of the warrant?
You are hereby directed to serve this warrant by posting attested copies thereof on or before Friday, March 15th, 2013, in at least one public place in each precinct within the town, and by publishing a copy of the warrant on or before April 7th, 2013. Hereof fail not, and make sure due return of this warrant with your doings thereon to the town clerk at the time and place of said meeting, given under our hands this 12th day of March in the year 2013, Wareham Board of Selectmen.
Thank you, gentlemen clerk. Ladies and gentlemen, if you would please stand for a salute to the flag, and if you would remain standing at the end for just a moment. Ladies and gentlemen, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And now we have Mr. Steve Ruiz. I would like to take a moment so that we may all send our thoughts of caring and support to all those who have been touched by the most recent events that were happening all around us. And I would like to share these words with you by Dan Zado. There was a time when the lone eagle on the mountain was a popular symbol for leadership, but today's fast-moving organization should have and must have leaders in every position. If you want a better metaphor than the eagle, then please consider the wild and wily Great Northern Geese. A flock of Great Northern Geese will fly thousands of miles in a perfect V formation, and therein lies the secret. As each bird moves its great wings, it creates an uplift for the bird following. Formation flying is 70% more efficient than flying alone. Everyone becomes aligned. At a distance, the flock appears to be guided by a single leader. The lead bird does in fact guide the formation, winging smoothly and confidently through the oncoming elements. If the lead bird tires, however, it rotates back into formation and another bird moves quickly to the point position. Leadership is willingly shared, and each bird knows exactly where the entire group is headed, so everyone leads. Each flock finds its own unique rhythm and spirit. The pulsating sound of huge wings beating together excites and energizes the entire formation. The geese enthusiastically haunt from behind to encourage those up front to keep up with their speed. Everyone inspires. In good times or bad, Great Northern Geese stand by one another. When a member of the flock gets sick, wounded, or shot down, two geese will drop out of formation and follow it down to help and protect it. They stay with it until it's able to fly again, and then they soar off together to catch up with the flock. Everyone cares. If we have as much sense as these geese, we too will share the leadership, and we will stand by one another in difficult times as well as when we are strong. I would like to take a moment to remember those who have led our community, who served our community, and have recently passed. Let us remember Mr. William Minnetonka, who donated Minnetonka Forest, and also donated many other things to the town. Mr. Dan Goodchild, who served on the finance committee; Martha Strong; Ed Walczek, who was a member of a finance committee; and Robert Barry. And please remember all those who have suffered over the last week. The people that have been affected by the Boston Marathon. The people in West Texas, that their community has been devastated, the loss of life. Our friends in Staten Island that we've adopted, that still are not back in their homes. And please send your caring thoughts to anyone else that you feel you wish to do to at this time. Thank you, you may be seen. Ladies and gentlemen, I would like to introduce those men on this stage that are here with us tonight in official capacity. We have our clerk, Mary Ann Silver, whose responsibility is to take all the minutes and verify the things that happen in town meeting. To my right, Mr. Richard Bowen, who is town council; Mr. Derek Sullivan, our town administrator; Mr. Joseph Ashley, who is the deputy town moderator; Chairman of the Board of Selectmen, Mr. Peter Titelbaum; we have Selectman Alan Slaven; Selectman Judith Whiteside, who recently was elected just a few weeks ago; Mr. Selectman Stephen Holmes. And in the finance committee, we have Mr. Larry McDonald; Mrs. Marilyn Donahue; Mr. Tom Warthen; Mr. Frank Peet; Mr. Sam Gray; Mrs. Bonnie Katouli; and Mr. Dominic Camarino. I don't think we have any new members on the school committee that I need to introduce. We do have a new member to our Board of Assessors, Roxanne LaBosa; and a new member to our housing authority, Mr. Bob Alvez. As you know, there are some rules that govern town meeting. In our town meeting, we rely on the Robert's Rules of Order, town meeting time, town meeting tradition, and those rules set forth by the moderator. In accordance with Mass. General Law Chapter 39, Section 15, and Article 12 of the October 27, 2003 Town Meeting, and approved by the Attorney General on November 21, 2003, whenever a two-thirds vote is required by statute, such a vote may be declared as such by the moderator without account and be reported as such by the clerk upon such declaration. Provided, however, that if seven or more voting members of town meeting dealt the vote, a counted vote shall be taken. The warrant, which our clerk has attested, has been duly posted, is the agenda for town meeting. And town meeting does not come to an end until all agenda items on the warrant have been decided either by approval, by being defeated, no action, or whether they've been tabled to the end of the meeting. The moderator will ask for a motion for each article. The vote and debate is on the motion, which may or may not be what senior printed warrant before you. So the motions are always up on screen. That is what your vote will be taken on, so please pay attention to what's in front of you on the screen. Following the motion, the moderator will ask the proponent to speak to the motion, and then the moderator will ask the Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee for their vote, and the recommendation is on the Finance Committee, and then debate will be open. Voters who wish to speak should approach the microphone on either side of the aisle and be recognized by the moderator before speaking. Please only have two people at the microphone, and that's to keep our aisles clear for safety reason. Before speaking, clearly state your name, and please keep your remarks limited to the content and specifics of the article. All comments are directed to town meeting through the moderator. We must remain civil and respectful. There should be no calling out, no applause, no rude behavior. And speakers on this floor should not be interrupted by others. Any person who persists in disorderly conduct will be warned by the moderator and then asked to leave. The moderator presides and regulates the meeting, decides all questions of order, and makes a public declaration of all votes. Now, the tradition of Wareham Town Meeting has been to allow the presenter of warrant articles to have five minutes to speak and two minutes for others. Therefore, I would ask the body that if they would like to continue this tradition, that I would move that proponents have five minutes and all others two minutes. I would like to have a motion. So move, do I have a second? Are those in favor? Amendments can be offered to any article being debated, and to offer an amendment, a voter needs to be in writing. The tellers have a paper that, if you need paper, that you can use to fill out. It needs to be handed to the moderator and then to the clerk. And then the moderator will recognize the mover of the amendment, and the amendment then will be debated, and then we will vote on the amendment either up or down, and returning debate to the original article. Amendments to amendments are not allowed. Reconsideration: The purpose of reconsidering a vote is to permit correction of hasty, ill-advised, or erroneous action or to take into account added information or a changed situation that developed since the taking of the vote. Our past practice is to not allow reconsideration except for these reasons. You can ask for reconsideration on the same day that the vote to be reconsidered was taken. It must be made by a member who voted on the prevailing side. It must be seconded. It is debatable, but it will only be permitted if there was a hasty, ill-advised, or erroneous action, or if there is additional information that was not previously available, or if there is a changed situation that developed since taking a vote. Now, non-voters are welcome to attend town meeting, but again, they need to be over here on my left-hand side. Now, just a couple of more important reminders. Exiting and entering the auditorium is very important to maintain the integrity of the vote. Please do not go out that door or the back door. If you need to leave, please use this door on my left, and that's so the checkers can maintain that you have checked in already and that you are here as a registered voter. Photo policy. We have one gentleman who will be taking photographs. He has asked for permission, I have given it. He will be sitting in the press section, and he has approached me before the meeting, and I have granted him permission. However, there will be no photos taken or allowed during a vote. There is no smoking on school property, and that means that you may not go out, sit in your car, and have a smoke. If you want to have a smoke, you actually need to leave the school property. That is a state law. Please turn off any of your cell phones or any electronic devices you might have. There is no food to drink in the auditorium except maybe some hard candies or water. And before we begin, just one more thing. Article 2, Section 2.6 of the Town Charter states that all department heads shall attend the sessions of each town meeting for the purpose of providing the town meeting with information pertinent to warrant articles, and I must make a roll call. We do have the Board of Selectmen here, we have the Finance Committee, Board of Health, Chief Assessing Officer; Community Development Director; Conservation Agent; Council on Aging; Data Processing; EMS; Inspection of Service; Municipal Maintenance; Planning; Police Department; Shellfish Harbor Master; Town Accountant; Town Treasurer Collector; Library Director; Water Pollution Control; and the School Superintendent. Does the Chairman of the Board of Selectmen wish to address the body?
Just briefly, thank you all for coming out and performing your civic duty and acting as citizen legislators to help the town performance business. This is a very important matter. We hear time and again that people want to have input into what we do as a government. This is your opportunity to do that, so thank you for performing that civic duty. I'm going to keep my remarks brief in furtherance of getting the meeting along here. I'd like to thank Selectman Holmes for his leadership from the last time we met in town meeting, in October, to now. I would say that the most significant accomplishment that occurred during that period of time was the board's decision to hire Mr. Sullivan as our town administrator. We are very pleased with Mr. Sullivan. He is a forthright individual. He is direct. He is honest. He has proven to be very competent, and he has proven to be very skilled in handling sensitive matters. So we're very proud of that. Other than that, I'd like to ask for a moment of silence for the victims of the tragedy in Boston. If we could do that for a second, please? Thank you, and thank you for coming again tonight to perform his duty.
We have a special meeting, town meeting call for 7:30, but I believe we have enough time for our remarks from the Chairman of the FinCon, if you would so like to address the body.
Madam Chair, in the absence of our Chairman, I've asked the clerk of the Finance Committee to read her letter.
Thank you. Clerk?
To the voters of Wareham, I would like to thank Derek Sullivan, the town administrator, for his input and hard work during these extremely difficult times. It has been one of the most difficult budget cycles for the Finance Committee. Mr. Sullivan has handled it like a seasoned professional. The Finance Committee is charged by Town Charter with advising town meeting of all articles dealing with financial matters subject to the attendee's approval. The Finance Committee has informed voters at every spring town meeting for the past three years that we have kicked the can down the road. Expenditures have outpaced our revenue for several years, and one-time opportunities have delayed the urgency to address the financial health of Wareham. In fiscal year 2014, there are no longer any one-time fixes available. In this budget, town expenditures are fully funded by the revenue from property taxes within the levy limit, state aid, forecasted local receipts, and transfers from available funds such as free cash. The most recent five-year forecast of revenues and expenditures shows a structural deficit of approximately $10 million over that period of time. There are no easy answers in the coming years, and it is imperative that the Board of Selectmen give guidance to the town administrator on the priorities for the town. I won't read the section in there about the charter. To date, there have been no public discussions by Wareham Board of Selectmen to consider policy or directives to address the priorities of Wareham. Ultimately, Wareham voters must make their priorities known to the elected officials. In addition, the town of Wareham is not alone in their fiscal crisis. We know this does not ease the pain, however, it is unrealistic to be held hostage by Proposition 2.5 when medical coverage is escalating at a minimum rate of 6% annually. I'm going to skip over the revenue section unless, I mean, you can read it in the book. I'm going down to capital. The only capital item included in the warrant is to replace the fleet management system located at Municipal Maintenance Department. The Finance Committee considers this a critical need. If the pump fails during severe weather, it will severely hamper needed services to the voters of this town. There remains unaddressed priority public safety capital items that need to be discussed by the, that will be discussed by the Capital Planning Committee in its report. We also ask that the Board of Selectmen address the current state of our infrastructure, buildings, roads, etc., when giving guidance to the town administrator. It is imperative we adopt a preventive approach through planning, through plans rather than reactive purchases in maintaining or replacing all municipal assets. The value of our assets continue to decline. Strict adherence to proper accounting procedures must be a priority in order to ensure accuracy and reliability of financial reporting. The auditor's report for several years has consistent lists of major deficiencies that point to a lack of institutional control. The lack of corrective action by management over the years questions the commitment to improving accountability, stability, and the financial health of Wareham. Turnover in both the town administrator and town accountant positions has compounded the issue. As voters, we must insist our elected officials understand and put forth an effort to guarantee the integrity of financial reporting. We must get our financial house in order to ensure our decisions are based on reliable financial information, not estimates.
Thank you, Mr. McDonald. Ladies and gentlemen, we have a special town meeting call for 7:30 p.m., so therefore I would like to call the special town meeting to order, and would ask the clerk to read the posting of the warrant. Commonwealth of Massachusetts, Plymouth SS, to either of the constables of the town of Wareham, greetings. In the name of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts,
In the name of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, you are hereby directed to notify and warn the legal voters of the town qualified to vote in town affairs to meet in the Wareham High School Auditorium, Viking Drive, Wareham, Mass. on Monday, April 22, 2013, at 7:30 o'clock PM, to act on the following articles.
We will waive the reading of the warrant.
Given under our hands this 19th day of March in the year 2013, Wareham Board of Selectmen.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Ladies and gentlemen, it is also the policy by virtue of our Charter that we take up warrant articles by lottery. However, at the moderator's discretion, when there are articles that are routine, that don't necessarily require debate, or don't generate debate, or appear that they can go onto a consent agenda, it's always expedient to try to group articles together and take a vote on those articles, and to try to pass them and get them out of the way. In our special town meeting, we have Articles 6, 7, and Articles 10 through 17. All of these articles were put in the warrant as placeholders in case the union contracts were settled. The union contracts have not been agreed upon, and therefore, every single one of these articles will have a motion made to be passed over. So, with your approval, I would like to put into a consent agenda, and I will call them out, and if you have an issue with them going into a consent agenda, please say so, and we will not put them on the consent agenda, but what I would like to put on the consent agenda are the following articles. Article 6, Article 7, Article 10, Article 11, Article 12, Article 13, Article 14, Article 15, Article 16, and Article 17. Hearing no objection, I would accept a motion that these articles be passed over as a entire consent agenda. Do I have a second? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes unanimously. Article number 1. Article number 1, may I have a motion, please?
Article 1, I move that the town vote to approve the transfers as shown in the special town meeting transfer handout. Do I need to read the specific transfers?
No, it's up on the screen, and does everyone have a handout? Okay, so it's, I've been advised that they did not do a handout, it's on the screen, so the motion is to vote to approve the transfers as shown on the screen before you. Do you speak to the article?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. During the special town year meeting, we are allowed to do inter- and intra-departmental transfers. I will go down the list for a better explanation. You'll see, the first item listed as A is $25,000 to be transferred from the town accountant's salaries to the town accountant expense line. This was for the purpose of having the FY '12 year consultant. That person helped us set the tax rate and close the books after we lost our town accountant. That's why we have the extra salary room in there. The item B would be $12,500 from the assessor's salaries to the assessor's professional services. This is to hire a consultant to help gather new growth, which is one of the items we need to keep our budget growing every year. We have the additional revenue. As an assistant assessor, data collector has not been hired this year. Item C is $9,000 from the town administrator's salaries to planning salaries. This was for collective bargaining and union position upgrades. We have the additional funds from the town administrator's salaries from not hiring the financial analyst position, for keeping that empty. Item D would be $9,500 from the inspectional services salaries to the veterans' expenses. The increase in veterans' expenses that were paid out, that is something that we have no control over. We have the additional monies available in the inspectional services salaries, as we've been using an interim building commissioner at a cost savings. $60,000 from the municipal maintenance salaries to municipal maintenance expenses for hurricane Sandy expenses. We are anticipating receiving a check of over $100,000 from FEMA. However, we do not know if we will receive those monies in this fiscal year, so we cannot guarantee it, and are using this approach to take the money from the salaries to the expenses to pay for the hurricane expenses. We have the money available in the salaries because a lot of our municipal maintenance department employees, such as the mechanics, will do work for other departments, and it is charged to those departments. Additionally, when the snow and ice, when it's during the blizzard, or any snowing condition, those firearms are charged against the snow and ice, not the municipal maintenance salary. Item F is $10,000 from the animal control salaries to police salaries for sick coverage. This year, in the police department, we have had multiple long-term injuries and illnesses. We've also had two major retirements that we had to pay out in excess of $60,000. Currently, we are asking for a $10,000 transfer from the animal control salary to the police salary. Item G, $15,000 from inspections to the legal line. That is for Labor Council. Tonight, we will be voting on funding two union collective bargaining agreements. We currently have 11 open. If we agree to those two, we will still have nine open. This has been collective bargaining agreements that have not been resolved since fiscal 2011, so we have had plenty of meetings. We are currently engaged in negotiations with 10 out of the 11 unions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. May I have the vote of the Board of Selectmen?
Vote of the Board of Selectmen, favorable action 4-0-0.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. May I have the vote and recommendation of the Finance Committee?
The Finance Committee voted favorable action 5-0-1.
Thank you. Is there anything to be said on Article 1? Seeing no one standing, I will now call for the vote. This requires a majority vote. You will be voting to transfer, as shown on the screen, all of those accounts. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes unanimously. May I have a motion, please?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. I move that the town vote to transfer a sum of money not to exceed $9,000 from Article 9 of the April 2012 Annual Town Meeting for the purpose of funding the collective bargaining agreement between the town and the Laborers International Union of North America, Wareham Clerical Union, funded through Article 6 of the FY '12 May Annual Town Meeting.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Is there anything to be said to speak to the article?
Madam Moderator, to give the body the background, this is to resolve the clerical union's collective bargaining agreement. As I said, it's been outstanding since FY 2011. This will encompass fiscal years 2012 and 2013. It is a 0% to the base, or COLA, Cost of Living Adjustment. There is an increase, a step increase, which is to put in a Step 7, which brings it in line to some of the other unions that the town has. All those that do not qualify for the Step 7 will receive a one-time $200 payout. There is approximately, I believe there's 21 people in this union. This increase is valued at $523 per person, or roughly $10.06 per week. This year, the unions and the clerical voting for unanimously also voted to change the healthcare splits, where they are paying an increased contribution. If they have a family rate, it will be roughly an additional $1,000 a year. If they are paying an individual rate of $623 a year. This collective bargaining actually is a loss to the unit, but they understand the fiscal times that the town is going through, and I appreciate their work on this.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. Can I have the vote of the Board of Selectmen?
Board of Selectmen voted 4-0-0, no action. The vote was due to not having information at the time.
Thank you. May I have the vote and the recommendation of the Finance Committee?
Thank you. The Finance Committee also had not voted on this article, as the information was not available when we were taking our votes.
Thank you. Is there anything further to be said on Article 8? Seeing no one standing, I will now call for the vote on Article 8. Article 8 requires a majority vote. The article before you is that the town vote to transfer a sum of money not to exceed $9,000 from Article 9 of the April 2012 Annual Town Meeting for the purpose of funding collective bargaining. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
It passes by a majority. May I have a motion, please?
Madam Moderator, Article 5. To see if the town will transfer the sum of $7,249.81 from community events receipts reserved for the appropriation account to community events account to fund community events approved activities.
Do I have a second? Do I have a second? To speak to the article? Mr. Sullivan?
Madam Moderator, thank you very much. First, I would just like to address the script in there, that would be, to see it, to, I move that the town vote to transfer, and then it would be the sum of $7,249.81. I worked with the town accountant to see what is the last remaining monies in that account for community events. This would transfer it out of a holding account into their revolving account, so they could actually expend those funds. This would not be any money for them to, would be additional monies in FY '14, it is simply for FY '13 monies that are in that receipts reserved for appropriation account.
Thank you. Can I have the vote of the Board of Selectmen?
Board of Selectmen voted favorable action 4-0-0.
May I have the vote and recommendation of the Finance Committee?
Madam Chair, on the Finance Committee, the numbers that were presented to us for which the vote was taken were substantially higher, so I think it would be inappropriate for us to put that vote before the body.
Thank you. Is there anything to be said on Article 5? Seeing no one standing, your vote now will come on Article 5, to see if the town will vote to transfer the sum of $7,249.81 from community events receipts, as is before you. Mrs. Katriel?
I have only a minor concern about the motion being stated as a revolving account. Is this really set up as a revolving account? I don't believe it is. So, I'm just worried that the motion in itself may be flawed altogether by stating it is a revolving account.
Mr. Sullivan, to answer the question?
Madam Moderator, within our system, it is called the community events revolving account. It is the best explanation that I have for it.
Thank you. Is there anything further to be said on Article 5? If not, I will call for the vote. Article 5 is before you, to see if the town will vote to transfer the sum of $7,249.81 from community events receipts reserved for appropriation account, as is before you on the screen. It requires a majority vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously. Article 9.
Madam Moderator, I move that the town vote to fund the collective bargaining agreement between the town and the Laborers International Union of North America Waste Water Treatment Plant, paid from Article 8 of the May Fiscal Year 12 Annual Town Meeting, the sum not to exceed $4,000.
Thank you. Mr. Keith, may I have a second? To speak to the article? Mr. Sullivan?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. This follows the same course as the last collective bargaining agreement. It is for fiscal years 2012 and 2013. There is an addition of a Step 7 after 15 years of service, and there is also a $200 one-time payout for those that do not qualify for the Step. This works out to $327 per person, or $6.29 per week. Thank you.
Thank you. May I have the vote of the Board of Selectmen?
Board of Selectmen voted no action 4-0-0, same reasoning, we didn't have the information which we just got tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. May I have the vote and recommendation of the Finance Committee?
Once again, the Finance Committee did not vote on this article. Information was not available at the time of the vote.
Thank you. Is there anything further to be said on Article 9? Seeing no one standing, I will now call for the vote. Article 9 requires a majority vote. The motion before you is that the town vote to fund the collective bargaining agreement between the town and the Laborers International Union of North America. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
Passes by a majority. May I have a motion?
I move that the town vote transfer from the fiscal year 2013 certified free cash the sum of $1,284,829 to the healthcare fund, healthcare trust fund.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Do I have a second? To speak to the article?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. I will, if you look at Page 1 in the special town meeting at the bottom, I will read a little bit from that, which I hope will explain. Starting off, the FY 2012 draft management letter has been received from our auditors. It gives the most comprehensive look at the health trust fund that we've seen since before the healthcare holiday happened. One of the most important sections of the management letter is a brief history of the healthcare holiday, which is as follows. At the end of fiscal year 2011, the town had a positive balance of $1,749,166, and needed to rebalance the fund with the employees by granting an employee-only holiday for $454,557 in FY '12, and the fund would have remained solvent. The Massachusetts Department of Revenue Director of Accounts strongly advised the town to rebalance the fund, and for the town to make their full contribution in FY 2012 without taking a premium holiday. This is from our auditors, but we support the director's recommendation- This is from our auditors, but we support the director's recommendation and made a similar recommendation. The town did not follow the recommendation given, did not balance the fund, and subsequently approved the healthcare premium withholding holiday of approximately two months to occur during the fiscal year 2012. The town's portion of the healthcare holiday began the day the fiscal year started, as it only budgeted $4,119,235. The employees' portion started on March 29th and ended on May 24th. When we received the basic financial statements in December, we were relieved to learn that the trust fund had a positive balance of $654,204. However, when receiving the management letter, the auditors have broken down the contributions, and it turns out the employees' balance in the trust fund should be $837,516. That means that the town actually owes $183,312 to the trust. The town must rebalance its trust fund to make sure that there are proper splits. We have an obligation to the employees to make sure that their portion is whole. The management letter provides us with actions that can be taken to rebalance the trust fund. What we've decided here, and it's a painful decision, is to move the entire amount of free cash into the trust fund. The options were to raise and appropriate and bring in approximately $2.6 million into the trust fund. We could have given the, we could give the employees the rest of the money in the trust fund and try and balance it out and see how we do with no dollars in there at the end of the year, or we can move the money in there and make sure that the trust fund remains solvent and work with the employees on the splits. With the Public Employees Committee, we've talked about such actions of putting those extra funds aside towards maybe going into a consortium such as the Mayflower Group. However, this step, putting this money in, is the most important step we can take to make sure that that fund remains solvent. Thank you.
Thank you. May I have the vote of the Board of Selectmen?
Board of Selectmen, before I read the vote, please note that Article Two and Article Three, our votes are reversed. The actual vote for the Board of Selectmen on Article Two is four, zero, zero.
Favorable action, sorry.
Thank you. May I have the vote and recommendation of the Finance Committee?
Madam Moderator, the Finance Committee voted favorable action, five, zero, zero.
Thank you. Is there anything further to be said on Article Two? On my right?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Brenda Ekstrom, Precinct Two. I would just like to know that last year at town meeting, I think it was last year at town meeting, we were told that when this, it was a contentious article as far as the healthcare trust fund at that time, and we were told that there would be either four to six weeks of healthcare holiday for the employees, and in that same time or whatever, that the town would be using that money to give it to the schools. So, and here it says two months. Was it in fact eight weeks? And if so, why did we give it twice as long as this body was informed that it was giving it? And number two, did that entire amount, and if so, how much was that amount that went to the schools through that negotiation? That now the free cash that the people in this town who I think have really tried to squirrel away money over the past few years, now all of that's going to get flushed out for that stuff? And I'd just like to know those two questions.
To answer the question? Mr. Sullivan?
It was an eight-week holiday, so approximately two months, and that would be to cover the same portion for the employees as what the town took. So the town taking that money in the beginning worked out to be approximately eight weeks. And the second question, I believe the split was approximately $900,000 to $450,000, and that would be off the top of my head.
Okay, if I may, Madam Moderator, thank you. So essentially what we're doing is we're taking all the money that we saved up for three years, and we're paying back the money that we gave $900,000 to the schools and $400,000 to the town. So we're just like draining our accounts because we didn't tighten our belts more last year? Is that more or less what it comes out to?
No, this stems back to FY 2010 when the splits were off, and in 2011, they continued to be, fiscal year 2011, they continued to be off by approximately additional $500,000. This, then when the healthcare holiday happened, it is essentially the last, the last step on there. What we have available for free cash stems from approximately $600,000 from two years' worth of EMS receipts, and that is not something we would receive in the future.
And just my final question, why did we go eight weeks rather than the four to six weeks that we were told we were going to? To answer the question?
The, when town meeting voted $4.1 million. I think that's a little better. I'm sorry, I actually forgot the question on it.
When the town voted $4.1 million last year, that, I guess you were going to say that was taking into account eight weeks.
Essentially.
So we were just, we were just misinformed that it was only four to six weeks, when in actuality the numbers were eight weeks.
I would say that's appropriate.
Thank you very much, Mr. Sullivan.
On my left?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Bill Haney, Precinct One. Can I, I don't know who I should address this question to, but I'm particularly disturbed about the sentence in here that says, "The Massachusetts Department of Revenue Director of Accounts strongly advised the town to rebalance the fund and for the town to make its full contribution in 2012 without taking the premium holiday." When did the Director of Accounts make that recommendation or provide that advice? And why did we not know it before we voted?
To answer the question, if someone cares to?
I believe the Director of Accounts made that known in a writing and in a meeting with the, with the town administrator, chairman of the Board of Selectmen at the time, and I believe a few other individuals in there. As to why this town meeting was not informed, I could not speak to that.
Madam Moderator, I just get concerned about the process of town meeting. We, I mean, really, we voted a million to holiday based on advice of people who were sitting up there that are no longer here, and I understand that. But, but what, what can town meeting do when it's provided the wrong advice?
To answer the question, if someone would care to? I don't know if Mrs. Donahue was standing first, or Mr. Holmes, to answer the question? Okay. To answer Mr. Haney's question, anyone?
I don't think it's an answer. I think I would like to commiserate with the previous speaker.
Wait a minute, we need to let Mr. Haney. Mr. Haney, I can't, as moderator, compel anyone going forward, you know, we come here in good faith to take votes, but as the moderator, I can't compel that those be carried out. That certainly would be up to administration and those who are in charge, and if they don't do what town meeting says that they should do or votes to do, then I think we as voters then have to take that into consideration and either not vote them into office at a later date or make our...
Don't misunderstand my question, Madam Moderator. I'm not suggesting that they didn't do what we authorized them to do. I'm suggesting that they withheld information from us and, and it caused people to vote for something that were clearly being advised not to do.
Madam Moderator? If I may, I did serve on the Finance Committee when we took that vote, and although I don't have a transcript of the meeting here, I know it was discussed. It was not a very good choice, it was not a great choice. I think the expression we used, we were going to hold our nose and go for it because it appeared to be the only choice to balance the budget that year. In effect, we did know that the Mass Department of Revenue frowned on it, but we were told that there was a very healthy balance in that account. Given the numbers that we were provided with, which now after the audit we discover were not in fact real numbers, we used the numbers that we were given at that time to make a decision that we thought was in the best interest of the town, and there was a great deal of debate on this floor with regard to that decision. In effect, what happens is we borrowed the money one time, and now we have to put it back. We would have had to make very, very difficult decisions two years ago. We would have had to face tremendous cuts at that point, and that was the road that we chose. This is the best way now that we see to rectify it, but I disagree with the previous speaker. I think that information was available, was discussed, maybe perhaps not as forcefully as you would like to have seen it, but it was not a recommended course of action. It was not illegal, it was not immoral, but it was not recommended.
Thank you. Mr. Haney, ask that?
Madam Moderator, also to add to the answer...
I think Mr. Holmes, are you to answer?
I was going to add, I was going to add to the answer that was just given.
Okay, to answer Mr. Haney's question?
All right, because there was also an ad hoc committee that was part of this whole process, and that the original healthcare holiday started out as four weeks, went to six weeks, and somehow mystically grew to eight weeks. The information that the auditors are putting forward as far as the department revenue by letter, et cetera, advising that we do the healthcare holiday for the employees only and the town not take it, was not put forth to all the members of that ad hoc committee and surely not put forth to the Finance Committee. It was our understanding that, yeah, it was recommended that it not be done, but there was no way that it could be stopped, right? And we were sitting in a situation where we were facing a substantial deficit. So the reason why you did not hear a town meeting, what you heard tonight is because these facts never came out prior to town meeting, and they never came out when this was vetted by both the ad hoc committee and by the Finance Committee.
Thank you. Mr. Holmes?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. It's not a surprise, it was a scheme then, it was a scheme now, and now we have to pay. This body was advised, prior to taking that vote, that the Department of Revenue frowned on this. Examples were given by this selectman about a town in, oh, I guess it's northwestern Massachusetts. One of the body members tried to get up and introduce information and was told that that couldn't happen by the moderator. Listen, this took place in the town of Lawrence. We were warned, it was in the papers, at least two members of the Board of Selectmen tried to warn you, and so here we are. We were told not to do it. We should have stopped then and not allowed that money to go to the school and not let the town take that money. But it was a scheme that was developed and agreed upon by the former town administrator. You can Google it, I'm sure you can see the tape of the town meeting as to what took place here. Unfortunately, if you get sold the bill of goods and you vote for it, then you gave him the authority to do it. I for one, and Mrs. Winslow, who's not here...
Twenty seconds.
...voted against this and tried to warn the body. And so the Department of Revenue, and I know that Mr. Paulson, who was a member of the committee, also had information that Mr. Perry from the Department of Revenue warned us not to do this and gave us Lawrence as the example. Thank you.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, if I could just give you a reminder that when we stand to speak to articles, that we should try to keep our remarks to what the article is before us. And as an example, the article before us is whether or not we want to vote to transfer. So that's what we should be discussing, do we want to transfer or don't we want to transfer? What happens is town meeting gets away from us when we go back and try to discuss things we did or didn't do or should do or maybe want to do. So keep in mind what the warrant article is before you and try to stay on track as to your discussion is what's before you on the article. So either we want to vote for it or we want to vote against it, and that's what your discussion should be. Seeing no one else standing to speak to Article Two? I'm sorry, Mr. Heath?
I'm sorry, Madam Moderator, on this article. One thing that's very important to also note is, let's talk the, let's talk the facts, the numbers, all right? There's a lot of explanations that might be, you know, on the political side, et cetera. But one of the major factors in this is when the numbers were put together, it was anticipated that after the holiday, we would have $1.4 million left in the reserve. The two previous years, 2009, 2010, our healthcare expenses ran about $7.4. The year that we're talking about, they ran $800,000 higher. It was over $8,200,000. So there was a misestimation of what our expenses would be, and that's one of the major reasons for us being so short and deficient right now and the balance being there. So that's part of what this is covering. This is covering that misestimate.
Thank you. Is there anything further to be said on Article Two? Seeing no one standing, I will now call for the vote. Calls for a majority vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes by a majority. Article Three. May I have a motion?
I move that the town of WAM vote to approve the establishment of a stabilization fund by the Upper Cape Card Regional Technical School District Committee's vote at its January 10th, 2013 meeting in accordance to Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 71, Section 16G and a half, by a majority of all the members of the Regional District School Committee. Chapter 71, Section 16G and a half also requires the approval of a majority of local appropriating authorities, town meetings of the member communities. As a fiscally responsible regional school district, the primary purpose of a stabilization fund is to give the Upper Cape Card Regional Technical School District a method to have money available for planned and/or unexpected capital expenses, wastewater treatment facility, and to avoid the need for further borrowing by member municipalities. Currently, excess and deficiencies E and D funds are used to lower assessments to towns and will continue to be utilized for this purpose.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Have a second? To speak to the article, I believe Mr. Dutch? Mr. Dutch is the Superintendent of Schools, Superintendent of Schools of the Upper Cape. To speak to Article Three, Mr. Dutch?
Excuse me?
To speak to Article Three?
Thank you. We are looking to have town meeting vote to approve the establishment of a stabilization fund for the sole purpose of building a wastewater treatment plant. At our meeting, the school committee established the stabilization fund through majority vote, and we hope to continue to move forward with this with the majority vote of our member municipalities. The custodian of the stabilization fund would be the treasurer of the regional school district. They would deposit and invest those funds. Interest would accrue to this fund and go back for the use of what is being developed. Annually, a report would be sent to member municipalities indicating what's in the fund balance, any withdrawals have been made, and any additions for the year. The use and purpose of the fund is for, by a two-thirds vote of all of the members of the regional district, for the purpose for which we would normally be able to borrow money. This is a significant listing of examples of reasons that we would be able to borrow money and therefore be able to use funds within the stabilization account. So you asked the question, why do we now need a stabilization account? We are in the process of planning and building a wastewater treatment plant. This plant... This plant was mandated by the Department of Environmental Protection. It's a significant capital expense. We anticipate it somewhere between $750,000 and $1 million. We have already set aside $377,000 in a reserve account. Have been informed that reserve accounts are no longer permitted for regional districts, regional school districts, and we need to create a stabilization fund. So we're looking to move the funds in the reserve account to the stabilization account at no cost to any of the five towns. In creating a stabilization fund, it will also represent, should the need arise, to borrow money for more favorable bonding in the instance of an anticipated large project. Why are we able to establish a stabilization fund? Effectively, we are a municipality, so just as any town is able to establish a stabilization fund, so is a regional school district as a result of this legislation which was passed in 2010. It was mentioned that we have an excess and deficiency account. That is for emergencies as well. We are required to come before the five towns to use funds in an excess and deficiency account, just as we are to use the funds in a stabilization account. The difference here is that funds that are in the excess and deficiency account can be used to offset the budget. Upper Cape Tech has put over $1 million from their excess and deficiency account in the last five years against the budget to decrease the cost to the towns.
Thank you. May I have the vote of the Board of Selectmen?
Board of Selectmen voted favorable action 020... excuse me, 022.
May I have the vote and recommendation of the Finance Committee?
The Finance Committee recommended favorable action 500.
Thank you. Anything further to be said on the question? Gentlemen on my right?
Eddie Percivis, Precinct One. Just a question. Is this just to establishing a fund or do we going to be assessed amount of money from each one of the towns to go into this stabilization fund?
To answer the question, although I believe I can answer it, this is just to approve a vote taken by the regional school committee. They have taken a vote to establish this fund and we as a town meeting need to affirm that vote. Is that correct, Mr. Dutch?
That is correct. The funds that are going into that stabilization funds already exist within the district and there is no assessment to the town at this time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Gentlemen on my left?
Madam Moderator, Barbara Power-Laters.
Can you speak right into the microphone, please?
Madam Moderator, Barbara Power-Laters. Through you to the previous speaker. If you could tell us the other sources of funds for the stabilization funds besides the transfer of this reserve money.
To answer the question, Mr. Dutch?
The sources of the funds that are currently in the reserve account moving to the stabilization fund are a result of revenue produced through adult and continuing education and our licensed practical nursing program. They're not local funds.
Future, speaking of future.
In the future, we continue to plan to have revenue through both of those programs, the licensed practical nursing program as well as adult and continuing ed. We have a historical record of revenue over the last 10 years through those programs.
Thank you, Mr. Dutch. Anything further, Mr. Power-Laters? Gentlemen on my right?
Mike Pol, Andrew Street. This sounds to me like it's just a bit of housekeeping, just changing one type of account to another type of account, but the Board of Selectmen voted 022. So could the representative of the Board of Selectmen explain why they're against this seeming...
To answer the question? Selectmen, say it again.
Our concerns were not today. Our concerns were long term. This will be an expense down the road as far as that plant goes to run it, et cetera. So there'll be operating expenses that probably will come to us as it does on yearly basis. We have one project, they have a bunch of windows that are being done. We're getting assessed. I think it's $30,000 a year. So there probably will be an expense. We were just looking at that. We can't fund our own schools. We're having a hard time justifying other expenses as well. Thank you.
Is there anything further to be said? On my right?
Dorothy Heath, District Two. To the Mr. Dutch, I went to your presentation through the Finance Committee. I'm just a little confused. Did you say funds had been used before from these accounts to lower our assessments or to keep our assessments lower? Because at the Finance Committee, you were specifically asked that question and you said they couldn't be used for that. So I'm confused.
Mrs. Heath, if you could direct your questions to the moderator and then I will ask if someone cares to answer.
Madam Moderator, could you... I didn't know how to ask that as a question.
Thank you. Mr. Dutch, to answer the question?
I'll be happy to clarify. Funds in the stabilization account cannot be used to offset costs or assessments on an annual basis. Funds in the excess and deficiency account, which currently exists already, can be utilized for that purpose.
So if we didn't transfer, Madam Moderator, the question is then, if we didn't transfer this money to the stabilization fund, it could be used to offset our assessments?
To answer the question?
It could not be because it's within, it's not local funds. They're funds generated through revenue-producing programs, so you couldn't use it to offset the cost. Additionally, if we're unable to establish the stabilization fund, because we've been required to develop a wastewater treatment plant, we would be coming back looking for bonding to pay for this rather than paying for it through the revenue that we produce. We're trying to do this through our own revenue-producing programs rather than asking the towns for this money through bonding.
Okay. I'm still confused, but... Thank you.
Leave. Selectmen, title bomb?
Yes, that's through you, Madam Moderator, to Town Council. I'd just like some confirmation from Council, basically affirming what Mr. Dutch has just told us, Superintendent Dutch, as to the operation, I guess of how this is going to work.
Mr. Bowen? Tony Bowen?
Madam Moderator, through you to the previous speaker. With no offense intended to the superintendent, I won't say that I was hanging on his every word. But what I'll do is I'll read from the statute, which is Chapter 71, Section 16G and a half. I'll just read the pertinent sections which may assist. The statute says, "A regional school district may, upon a majority vote of all the members of the regional district school committees," that has already happened, "and with the approval of a majority of the local appropriating authorities of the member municipalities." So that's why it's in front of you. You're the local appropriating authority and the district needs the approval of the majority of the town meetings of the members. "May establish a fund and may, in any year, include in its annual budget for deposit in the stabilization fund an amount not exceeding 5% of the aggregate amount apportioned to the member municipalities for the preceding year, or such larger amount as may be approved by the Director of Accounts." So that section of the statute explains how the stabilization fund would be funded. The second paragraph of the statute talks about the treasurer being the custodian. The superintendent's told you about that. Where this stabilization fund differs from the ones that you're familiar with, for example, to take money out of a stabilization fund for the town, as I'm sure you'll see during the budget discussion, whenever that happens, the... To take money out of the stabilization fund here requires a two-thirds vote of the legislative body, you. This is what the statute provides with respect to the district. It says, "The stabilization fund may be appropriated by a vote of two-thirds of all the members of the regional district school committee for any purpose for which the regional school district may borrow money or for such other district purposes as the Director of Accounts may approve." So in other words, money, if you... The stabilization fund is created. The withdrawal from it does not come back to this town meeting or any town meeting. It is withdrawn by a two-thirds vote of the regional school committee. Thank you.
Gentlemen on my left?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Bill Heaney, Precinct One. Through you, Madam Moderator, to the superintendent or anybody else you'd like to have answer it. Does what we've heard here tonight mean to say that any debt service that would be required to be funded for a new sewerage treatment plant would not be assessed to the communities and would in fact be paid for through the funds generated by the programs which you've spoken about?
To answer the question, Mr. Dutch?
Given the cost of the wastewater treatment plant, the current funds that are available as well as anticipated funds at the end of this fiscal year, and in light of the five-year window to build the wastewater treatment plant, it is anticipated that there would be no need to request funds through town meeting, through our budget. As Council has mentioned, we do have the ability to add dollar amounts to the town budget through a line item that is the stabilization account. But it is our, based on our calculation and our revenue, that that will not be necessary if we're able to stay within the $1 million costs. Additionally, for clarification, we are required, as a result of the legislation, to identify the reason for placing funds into that stabilization fund, which is why we've identified the wastewater treatment plant as the reason. We would have no intent to put any other monies in without coming to town meeting to identify the reasons we would be moving money into or requesting funds into that account.
Is there anything else to be said on Article Three? Seeing no one else standing, I will call for the vote. This requires a majority vote. The article before you is that the town of Wayham vote to approve the establishment of a stabilization fund by the Upper Cape Cod Region of Technical School District as voted by its school committee's vote at January 10th, 2013. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
Chairs in doubt? All those say aye. Please hold up your cards. All those opposed? It passes by a majority. Thank you. Article Four.
Article Four. To see if the town will vote to approve the form of the Tax Increment Financing, TIF, agreement by the town of Wayham and the La France Hospitality Company on file with the Board of Selectmen designated as the Economic Development Area Land and Building located on one tax parcel containing four acres located on Rosebrook Way, as further depicted on the Wayham Town Assessor's map, 109A, Lot 1023A, respectively, and pursuant to the Massachusetts General Law. Chapter 23A, SE, and authorize the Board of Selectmen to execute the TIF agreement.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Have a second. To speak to the article? Mr. Sullivan?
Madam Moderator, he is correct. It should read to see, to, "I move that the town vote to..."
We will change that motion to see if the town will vote to. Thank you. To speak to the article, Mr. Pena?
Madam Moderator, through you to the body. I have a brief PowerPoint presentation that I'd like to highlight some of the key elements. If you could go to the first slide, please. First, I just wanted, there's been a lot of confusion about what a TIF agreement is. TIF agreement stands for Tax Increment Financing and it's a, it allows municipalities to provide incentives to stimulate job creation. And it's an agreement between a town and a business and where the town may exempt up to 100% of the increased tax value resulting from the development for a period of up to 20 years. Next slide, please. TIFs, there have been over 1,400 TIFs that have been executed statewide since the program's been in effect. The town of Wayham itself has had 14 TIFs. Three, most recently, three TIFs have been approved for hotels in Plymouth and the most recent TIF approved for the La France Group in New Bedford. The project averaged about 47% over 15 years. Just to give you some background on how the TIFs have been used. In this agreement, it's important for people to understand a couple of things. Based on the estimates, and I should have mentioned, I apologize, I should have mentioned that, the town put a group together to negotiate the TIF. That group included the town treasurer, myself, the town administrator, and the town assessor. Based on our evaluations and assessment, estimates provided by the town assessor, we estimated that if we were to provide the TIF for a 15-year period, that on the positive side, the town would receive $761,000 in non-exempt tax. That's about 55% of the general revenue that would have been in play. La France Group would have been, would have received $622,000 in exemptions. Now, if you go back to the left side of that column there, what you'll also see is, based on those same estimates and at a 50% occupancy rate, that the La France Group would pay in taxes the following: approximately $2.3 million for the occupancy tax, $74,000 for local meals tax, and an estimated $111,000 in land taxes. So if you look at the bottom lines on both of those, you'd see that we would receive during that 15-year period approximately $3.3 million and we would have exempted approximately $622,000. Next slide, please. This next slide right here gives you visual of how that, how those taxes would be exempted. The green is the money. That's the money that we would receive. And the red is the exemption. So as you see in the beginning of the project, the town receives less funding. Then right around year eight, we break even and eight, nine, those years are both even. And then starting in year 10, we receive a greater value. Next slide. That value averages about $22, excuse me, $220,000 annually over that period of time. Additional benefits that would come to the town include 50 new jobs, full and part-time, with a hiring preference for Wayham residents, 30 to 40 construction jobs during the building of the hotel, amenities for local residents and visitors. And that bottom number is a really important number because what it says to us is that for every dollar that the town exempts, that's a $622, the town receives $5.32 back in tax. That's the $3.3 million. This is a sample of what the hotel would look like. It's a Town Place Suites by Marriott. It will have approximately 90 rooms and a 300-seat function facility. It'd be located at the entrance to Rosebrook, right on 28, right off the exit ramp. It would have an indoor pool, fitness room, breakfast room, views of the Cranberry Bogs, and it's scheduled, construction is in June, and it would be completed by the summer of 2014. And then finally, this last slide here tells us about the value of a restaurant in the community. And what you can see is when guests come to a restaurant, they... community, and what you can see is, when guests come to a restaurant, they spend these totals, about $41 in bars and restaurants for each guest, local retail sales, about $16, and all other economic sectors, about $6. So, when you look at those numbers and you do the math, that's about $60 for each person that comes into a hotel.
Mr. Pino, your time is just about up.
Thank you, and my slide presentation is just about up. I did want to just mention that I have here today with me Jeff Pino, who represents the La France Group, and if the body were to have any questions, Madam Moderator, Mr. Pino is available to answer them.
Thank you. May I have the vote of the Board of Selectmen?
Vote of the Board of Selectmen is favorable, action 4-0-0.
I have the vote and recommendation of the Finance Committee.
The Finance Committee voted favorable, action 5-0-0.
Thank you. Is there anything to be said on Article Four? Gentlemen to my right.
Edward Pesavich, Precinct One. Through you, Madam Moderator, a question. On the slide presentation, it stated that the tax abatement was 45%, equal to $622,000. I believe in a previous presentation, it was 49% that was equal to $622,000. Could we get an answer to that, please?
To answer the question, Mr. Pino?
Thank you for bringing up that point. The actual TIF percentages, which are represented over the period of time, that percentage split is 51 to 49. So, the town would have 51% of their taxes, and the La France Group would have 49% exempted. When you work out the dollar amounts over that period, the town would actually receive 55% of the dollars during that time period, and La France would have exempted 45%.
Thank you. Selectmen Titelbaum?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Through you to the body. I would strongly urge the body to vote for this. This is an incredible opportunity for the town to get a major hotel chain here. It's an opportunity for our citizens to participate in the construction of the facility. It's an opportunity for our citizens to work in the completed facility. It's a revenue-generating enhancement to the town, not only in terms of the additional property tax that we will realize from this, and I want people to be clear on that. In order to entice people to communities, it's a normal way of doing business, to bring new business in, to offer them this tax increment financing setup. Plymouth has done any number of them in the past 15 years. While Wareham languished for over a decade, we passed our first one, I think, since 1999 in the fall. In languishing, we lost. We lost opportunities, maybe not as good as this one, but we did lose other opportunities while other communities gobbled them up. I know the argument goes that against it would be to say, "Well, you know, aren't we undervaluing our land? Wouldn't they build it anyway?" I guess the answer to that is, look around. Where are all the hotels in Wareham that were built without one of these agreements, whereby somebody could come in, took all the risk upon themselves, were able to obtain financing and get it done? It hasn't happened yet. So, I would really urge the body to vote for this. It's a great thing for the town. It's a key to further development in that area, to lure in other businesses, and frankly, I would actually be so bold as to ask for unanimous on this. Thank you.
Am I right?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Brenda Exum, Precinct Two. If I could ask, when this hotel is built, and we all know that you get the new growth figure from new construction, will this be omitted from the new growth? Or does it become part of the new growth, but they just don't get taxed on it? If someone could answer that for me?
Is anyone able to answer the question? Mr. Sullivan?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. The new growth, we could not add that all in. You could only add the new growth amount of what we would receive back. If you did, that'd be an artificial number. I think that's my understanding of the way you're phrasing the question.
Well, when you have the valuation of the property, you now have, I don't know, $5 million hotel on it. That would usually become part of the new growth, where you calculate out your Prop Two and a Half, and all of that. But we're not taxing the property owners or the business owner, so therefore, that $5 million valuation has to be dispersed among somewhere. Is that not correct?
To answer the question?
No, that's not my understanding of it.
Okay, if I just may, the one other thing I have to say is that I'm not against TIFs, but the property that this is on, 10 years ago, this body voted to do an overlay district on that property because there was going to be things constructed on it. Eight years ago, we came back and expanded the business development overlay district. I think that if you're going to do TIFs, you do TIFs to try to get business in here, not business that's actually sitting there waiting until they can get a good deal. So, thank you.
On my left?
Donna Ashley, Precinct Six. I just want to say, I've lived in this town now for 20 years, and researching this and checking all this out for town meeting, I have to agree with Mr. Titelbaum, and I think this is the best thing that I have seen come to Wareham in that 20 years. And I think we have an opportunity here to have something that's going to help Wareham, and we're going to get so much more than that little drop in the bucket that we're giving as far as an incentive to the company to come here. And I think it's just an excellent opportunity. It's going to bring those tourists, and it's going to bring people, and it's going to help people here who have that need of a hotel sometimes, and when they have visitors come in. So, I just, you know, I want to say, I agree, Mr. Titelbaum. I'd like to see it unanimous, too.
Mr. Pesavich, I just want to check on your time. Okay. Am I right?
Eddie Pesavich, Precinct One. I'd like to introduce an amendment to the agreement and change the 45% tax exemption to a 10% tax exemption.
Unfortunately, that's out of order. Mr. Pesavich?
Why?
It's a question for counsel.
Madam Moderator, through you to the previous speaker. Under the TIF laws, the contracts are negotiated between the Board of Selectmen and the taxpayer. The agreements are then presented to town meeting for an up or down vote. So, therefore, following that logic, Madam Moderator has ruled that anything other than an up or down vote would be beyond the scope of the article.
Okay, to speak to the article, then.
To speak to the article?
The figures used that were presented to us in that slideshow are estimates. They're not hard numbers. The only hard numbers there are the property taxes, and we're giving away $622,000 in property taxes. The rest are all estimates. They're guesses, they're projections. They're not guaranteed. Can this town afford to give away $622,000 in revenue?
Ladies and gentlemen, please?
I don't think so, especially what we're looking at in the rest of this budget and what's going here in the town. I think the idea of a TIF was a good idea. I think this is just too much money giving it away. If it was reasonable, not a 49% cut, but a reasonable cut, I think I'd be in favor of it. So, I ask you to vote against this. Thank you.
Thank you. Gentleman on my left?
Brian Hesleton. I'd just like to just make a quick statement here. You know, we're all talking about money and everything here, and we're going to give a company a tax break, and what about everything else that goes along with the company that's going to come in here? Fire, police, that's going to cost the taxpayers, because everything's going to have to be increased. And yes, it's a good opportunity for the town, but it's not just a short-term thing. You know, it's going to be a long-term for us. There's going to be more police, there's going to be more fire. Who's going to foot that bill? The taxpayers, once again, and it's always the taxpayers. It's a great opportunity for a big company, but, you know, once again, there's a lot more than just the tax break to bring somebody in here. And once again, the taxpayers are going to have to foot the bill for all the extra things that go along with this.
Thank you. Gentleman on my right?
Peter Belzerini, Precinct Three. I don't know if any of you have driven by that piece of land recently, but the last time I went by there, there was absolutely nothing on it. To say that we're giving up $622,000 in taxes is all well and good, but since there's nothing there, I don't think we're going to get anything from it at this point, other than the tax on the land itself. So, to make the argument that we're giving up $622,000 doesn't make a lot of sense, because if we don't work a TIF agreement, probably the developer will find a place where the TIF agreement is more palatable to the voters. So, you can look at it as giving up, but if there's nothing there, we're not giving up anything, because there's nothing there to tax. The fact that we're building there, that we're torn down. So, I think we're way ahead of a game by doing this. Another point that people have made, I sat in the audience over at the Old Town Hall back in the '80s, I think it was, when the town bought the golf course, originally, the Bay Point, as it's called today. The big argument at the time was that we were going to have an in-conference center, we were going to sell the golf, you know, fix it up, sell it, and they were going to put it in conference center. Well, that was like 30 years ago, and you still only can stay in like the motels on Cranberry Highway today if you have a visitor over here. So, it's about time we were finally able to get a quality, name-brand hotel to have interest to come into our town and provide a very needed service. I have relatives that come in from out of town, and they have to go to Fairhaven, they have to go to New Bedford, wherever. So, I would urge everyone to follow Mr. Titelbaum's advice and pass this, whether it's unanimous or by one vote, let's get this hotel built. Thank you.
On my left?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Through you to the body, Bob Brady, Precinct Three. I, too, rise and pretty much to say a lot of what Mr. Belzerini just noted, and that is that we can argue that we're giving something up, but we're not giving anything up unless we develop the property. And what we're going to realize, well beyond 3.3, and yes, those are estimates, and that's at a 50% occupancy, I'm going to guess that a Marriott hotel with 90 rooms ideally is going to occupy more than 50%, so that 3.3 is likely going to be more, but it's going to be a catalyst to develop more of Wareham, whether it be the Bedawd or all the peripheral property, be it beyond West Wareham, be it back this way to East Wareham. Wareham has a perfect opportunity to set in motion the desire for good development and a good future, and I would also like to encourage everyone to vote unanimously.
Thank you. Am I right?
Madam Moderator, Mike Flaherty, Precinct One. I move the question.
We have a motion before us to move the question. There is no debate on Mr. Flaherty's motion to move the question. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
We now are calling for a vote on Article Four. Article Four is now before you. Just want to check the language. We have before us, "I move that the town vote to, A, approve the form of the Tax Increment Financing, otherwise known as a TIF agreement, by and between the Town of Wareham and the La France Hospitality Company," as you see before you on the screen. This requires a majority vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
Passes by a majority. Ladies and gentlemen, we have finished all of the articles within our special spring town meeting, so I will accept a motion to adjourn the spring town meeting and to return back to our annual meeting. I have a motion, do I have a second? All of those in favor?
Aye.
All of those opposed? Spring town meeting, special town meeting has adjourned, and we now will return to the annual town meeting. If you would just give me 30 seconds here to flip back in my notebook. Okay, going back to our annual town meeting, again, we have the opportunity to take some articles on a consent agenda. Just give me a minute. We have several housekeeping articles that come before us year after year, so I would like to put into consent agenda number one, and I'm possibly going to suggest two, that we take Article Number Two, Article Number Three, Article Number 24, and Article Number 29. Article Two is our housekeeping article that allows for the town administrator and selectmen to enter into contracts. Article Three allows the treasurer to enter into compensating balance agreements. Article 24 is the annual debt service payment on Tremont, Nail, and Bryant Farm. And Article 29 will allow the expenditure of interest from loan payments for the administration of the septic loan payments. These come before us at every annual town meeting. Again, if you have any objection, I will read them out. I would like to put Article Two, Article Three, Article 24, and Article 29. Hearing no objection, I would accept a motion to put Articles Two, Three, 24, and 29 into a consent agenda. It would require a majority vote. Do I have a motion? I have a motion made in a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Second consent agenda, we have several articles on our warrant, and every single one of them have a motion to pass over. So, I would like to take these articles as a consent agenda, accept a motion to pass over them as a consent agenda, and that will take those off of our warrant. So, we have Article 10, Article 12, Article 16, Article 17, 18, and Article 20. Now, Article 10 is the Harbor Masters Seasonal Personnel Article, and those funds are already in the budget, which is why we would pass over it. Article 12 is the Harbor Masters Maintenance and Improvement Fund. That's not needed at the moment. Article 16 is the Municipal Maintenance Fuel Pumps and Fleet Management, and that will, a motion will be made to pass over that article, and it will be taken up at the next available town meeting. Article 17 will have a motion to pass over, and that's the Harbors and Beaches Municipal Maintenance Fund, and that will come before you at the fall town meeting. Article 18 is the fall town meeting, I'm sorry, is the line painting fund, and again, that will come before us at the fall town meeting. And Article 20 is the Routine Care and Maintenance of Town Cemeteries, and this article was discovered that it had not gone before the cemetery commissioners for a vote, and therefore cannot be on the warrant. So, again, I will read them off to you, and if you object to any of them, just please say that you object. Article Number 10, Number 12, Number 16, Number 17, Number 18.
Objection, but it might just be a question that could clear up the objection.
Usually consent agendas don't allow for any discussion or debate.
It's not really a debate, I just need further information before I can...
We can't discuss them, I'm sorry. That's part of a consent agenda. If you have a question for it, then we should not include it in the consent agenda and ask you a question at the time that it comes up.
Objection to 18.
And Article 20. So, we have in our consent agenda Article 10, Article 12, Article 17, and Article 20. Hearing no objections, I will accept a motion to pass over as a consent agenda Articles 10, 12, 17, and 20.
Motion so made.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? It passes. It passes. Right, just...
Madam Moderator?
Just one minute, Mr. Titlebaum, just so that the clerk and I can take these out. It's 10, 12, 17, and 20, and 2, 3, 24, and 29. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. We've just taken care of eight articles. Mr. Titlebaum, for what reason do you rise?
A point of procedure.
State your point.
I wish to make a motion to table discussion of monetary articles still on the warrant.
Please state your motion.
I move to table discussion of the following monetary articles, Articles 6, 7, 8, 9, 11, 13, 14, 16, 18, and 19. And then, at the conclusion of consideration of the non-tabled articles, meaning the rest of the warrant tonight, or when we finish those, I move to adjourn this meeting until June 18th at 7:00 PM in the Wareham High School Auditorium.
I have a second. Do you have that motion, Flaherty? Okay, I have a motion made by Mr. Titlebaum to take Articles 6, 7, 8, 9, 11, 13, 14, 16, 18, and 19, and to table them, and then at the conclusion of consideration of all of the remaining articles, to adjourn this meeting until June 18th. I will accept that motion, Mr. Titlebaum, if you would like to speak to it.
Yes, I would, Madam Moderator, thank you. Through you to the body. Just by way of procedural background here, on Wednesday, the Board of Selectmen, the Finance Committee, and the School Committee met jointly. We discussed the budget, Article 6 primarily, although there were other financial considerations that did come up during the discussion. At that time, we learned, I think we already knew they might intend to do this, but we learned, I think officially, that the Finance Committee, through its right of First Amendment to the town budget, which they have, intended to change the number that was in the warrant materials that you've received, the printed materials you have before you, and instead insert a significantly higher number that had been provided by the School Department, which, under the charter, they as of right can set. Looking back in time, I frankly have a little bit of a confession to make. I've been in this job for a year now, and over that time, we've all known that the schools have a funding issue. We know the town has a funding issue. You know, I don't want to spend too much time looking in the rearview mirror, but I had an opportunity during the past year to reach out to the School Committee, to talk to individual members. We didn't need to do this on a board-to-board basis, I could have done it individually, to find out what they were looking for, and especially in the context of the overrides that failed, that was a step I should have taken, and I didn't. And so, through inaction, and remember, omission is still a sin, we come to this day, when we're sitting here in town meeting, we're wondering what's going to come out, what the budget is going to be, what budget you're going to have to vote upon, and this is not a good position for you to be in as a body. It means that I failed my responsibility, it means that we didn't get the job done, we didn't come into this meeting with a budget that was balanced, that you could look at and say, okay, I can vote on this in good conscience and support the town and support the schools, which are a department of the town, at the same time. So, the reason I'm moving to table this, and one further caveat, I rise on my own to do this. We did not have time to meet as a Board of Selectmen to vote, to do this as a policy of the Board, so I'm doing this on my own, I want you to understand that. That having been said, we've been told by the Department of Revenue, when the question of an unbalanced budget comes up, they tell us not to do it. They also tell us that if it is done, you're going to have a problem setting your tax rate in the fall. They will not approve your tax rate. Tax rate isn't approved, tax bills don't go out on time. When tax bills don't go out on time, you don't get the revenues in. When you don't get the revenues in, you've got to borrow to fund your day-to-day operations, and when you do that, you screw up your bond rating. So, there's any number of bad consequences that can come out of this if we were to vote an unbalanced budget tonight. So, going forward, I don't think we can run that risk. I do think, between now and June 18th, we have time to meet as a body, the Board of Selectmen, with the School Committee, because let's face it, these are the two principal sort of players in this, with the FinCom awaiting a result and getting it in time so that they can make a subsequent recommendation to this body on June 18th. And further in that regard, I've reached out to Chairman Fugan of the School Committee. We have agreed to set a joint meeting for May 1st to discuss the budgets. Everything at that meeting will be on the table. I don't see us meeting as five selectmen and five School Committee members. I see us meeting as 10 individuals prepared to go over every single item in the budget. And this is the hard work that has to be done, and it's not all going to get done on May 1st. There will have to be other meetings. We are prepared to meet until we get this fixed, with a due date, in my mind, of no later than May 31st, so that we can get the completed product to the FinCom, so that they have time to go over it themselves and make their recommendation to town meeting. So, that's the long and short of it. I don't think it's a great solution. It's a very imperfect solution. We don't know what's going to come out of this work with the School Committee, but I think it avoids a potentially drastic problem. So, with that in mind, I would urge you to vote for this motion.
Thank you, Mr. Titlebaum. The motion to table discussion on this is not debatable. It does require a two-thirds vote. So, we have a motion before us to table discussion of the following monetary articles, and these are all articles in your warrant that would involve any expenditure, and I would assume the reason for that is because some of these could potentially change after discussion of the budget and any changes made to the budget. So, the motion would be to table Articles 6, 7, 8, 9, 11, 13, 14, 16, 18, and 19.
Point of information.
Just a minute. And, these articles will be tabled until June 18th, at which time we would reconvene, and we would reconvene this meeting here at 7 o'clock in the auditorium. So, again, this is not debatable, and it does require a two-thirds vote. What is your point?
My point is, you say it's not debatable, so if anything that was said by the previous speaker is incorrect, we're not allowed to debate.
It is not debatable.
Yeah.
To what reason do you rise, Mr. Camerano?
Can we ask counsel if, use the mic, please?
Please use the microphone.
Is it, can we ask counsel that if the FinCom still has its first right?
I'm sorry, if the...
Can you speak on that?
If the FinCom has what?
We have our first right to change and speak on anything. I'm asking counsel if...
No, no. A motion to put items on the table is not debatable. It requires a two-thirds vote. So, once again, I just want to, so that we're very clear on what we're voting on. Selectman Titlebaum is putting Articles 6, 7, 8, 9, 11, 13, 14, 16, 18, and 19. That's all of your articles that contain money on the table, and we will come back on June 18th to discuss all of the money articles. I will call for a vote.
Madam Chair, I challenge. I'm sorry, I have to challenge. There's things that these people need to know before they vote.
I'm sorry, Mr. Heath. According to town meeting time, it is not debatable. So, I'm going to call for the vote. Again, it requires a two-thirds vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
I will ask the tellers to please come forward. All those in favor to table Articles 6, 7, 8, 9, 11, 13, 14, 16, 18, and 19, and lay them on the table until we reconvene on June 18th. Please raise your cards up high and leave them up until the tellers have counted you.
Section 1, 32, 32.
Section 1, 32. Section 2?
Section 2, 24.
Section 2, 24.
74, 74.
Section 3, 74, 74. Section 4?
Section 4, 38, 38.
Section 4, 38. All those opposed, please raise your cards up high.
Section 1, 6.
Section 2?
Section 2, 5.
Section 3?
17.
And section, I'm sorry, section 3, 17. Section 4?
Section 4, 14, 14.
We have 168 in the affirmative, we have 32 in the negative. It passes by a two-thirds majority. I'm sorry, 42. It passes by a two-thirds vote. So, if we give the town clerk a minute to pull those articles out of her file, because then we have to go back to the lottery. Someone may have dropped a pair of glasses down by the third row here, just double-check to make sure they're not there. Article 1. Article 1, this is generally our annual article. What we did discover, that in the posting of the warrant, inadvertently, the position of town clerk was left out, so we just want to legally cover that the town clerk's position was included in the annual election, so I would accept a motion that is before you, that the town vote to choose the following offices, and these are all the officers that were on the ballot for the April 2nd election. Okay, I have, generally, the motions come from the FinCom. I realize that sometimes when we go to corporate or we have meetings, it can come from the body, but generally, we like to have them from the FinCom. I did hear a motion as on the screen in a second, so this requires a majority vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Article 30 is now before us. Ladies and gentlemen, please. Article 30 was a petition article, and generally, the petitioner would stand to make the motion. Is the petitioner here? This article, the way it was written, in actuality, is not something that we can vote on. So, Mr. Malcurn, if you would be willing to make the motion to pass over this article? Would you come to the microphone, please?
I'd like to have it passed over, because I didn't have enough information, and I was turned down without, I didn't get a lot of support from the town administration. I'll try again in the fall. Thank you.
Thank you. We have a motion before us on Article 30 to pass over Article 30. Do I have a second?
Second.
A second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Article 5 sets the salaries of the town moderator, the town clerk, and the registrar. So, for that reason, I am, as the moderator, going to step aside on this article and have
Can I have a motion on Article 5, please?
I move the town vote to fix the salary and compensation of the following elected officials, town clerk, town moderator, and any other elective... Town clerk, town moderator, and any other elective office of the town as provided by Section 108, Chapter 41, General Laws, and to raise and appropriate a sum of money as follows: Town clerk, sixty-three thousand, three seventy-one, thirty-two. Registrar, seven hundred. Town moderator, one eighteen per diem.
Can I have the vote of the Board of Selectmen, please?
The vote of the Board of Selectmen was favorable action four zero zero.
And the vote and recommendation of the Finance Committee?
The Finance Committee voted favorable action five zero zero.
Thank you. Do I have a proponent to this article? To speak to the article, Mr. Percivich?
I just have a question through you, Mr. Moderator. When we say a hundred and eighteen dollars per diem, that's when acting as the town moderator?
That's correct. That's the each day of town meeting.
We need a little clarification in there.
To answer the question? No, that's per night of town meeting. That's not every day.
I understand, but don't you want to clarify that? Because it doesn't say that. It just says town moderate a hundred and eighteen dollars per diem.
Seeing no one standing, we will now take a vote on article number five. It is, I move that the town vote to fix the salary and compensation of the following elected officers: Town clerk, town moderator, and any other elective officers of the town as provided by Section 108, Chapter 41, General Laws, and to raise and appropriate a sum of money as follows: Town clerk, sixty-three thousand, three seventy-one point three-two. Registrar, seven hundred. Town moderator, one hundred and eighteen dollars and no cents per diem. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say nay. Passes by a majority.
Okay, we have, the next one will be article four. But before we get to article four, it's been brought to my attention that we have someone in the audience who is using their iPhone to videotape this meeting. Town meeting is not an open meeting. And to take pictures or video, you must ask for permission ahead of time from the moderator. I have only had one person asked to take pictures, and WCTV has asked to videotape this meeting. So I would very strongly suggest that you put your iPhone away. I will ask my tellers to take note, and if they see you doing it, I will ask them to bring it to my attention again, and I will have you removed. So, just so that you understand, this is not an open meeting. Town meeting is a legislative body. And if you want to videotape, whether it's on your iPhone or any other thing, you need to ask permission in advance. Article four is before you. Can I have a motion?
Madam Moderator, I move that the town hear the reports of the Selectmen, School Committee, Dog Bylaw Study Committee, and the Capital Planning Committee, as required by statute, and any other reports from officers and committees who consider it expedient to do so.
Do I have a second? We have a motion before us to hear the town, to hear the reports of the Selectmen, the School Committee, the Dog Bylaw and Study Committee. I will call for a vote on this, and if the vote is in the affirmative, we will hear the reports as required by statute. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? It passes by majority. Do the Selectmen care to make a report? Same report as what you gave in the beginning?
Exactly.
Thank you. Would the School Committee like to make a report? Okay. Would the Dog Bylaw Study Committee like to make a report?
Just briefly, two matters. Fall town meeting voted to ask the Legislature to overturn Special Act from 1994, where dog hearings were put under the control of the Chief of Police. The purpose of this was to return them back to the Selectmen, broaden our options. That legislation has been filed, and I expect it will be acted on in this legislative session. The second piece is that the Dog Bylaw Study Committee, if you look in your booklets, you'll see that we did in fact come up with a proposed new dog bylaw. So I'll reserve any reporting on that to discussion of that article.
Thank you. We have a report from Capital Planning.
Sandy Slaven, Precinct Three, member of Capital Planning. The Capital Planning report is in the back of the articles. I will not take the time to read it, but I will emphasize that we have a five-year plan identified in detail, provided by the various departments in the town. And in order to support that five-year plan, we would need over seventy-three million dollars. We are looking at three-point-five million just for the wastewater treatment plant. Absolutely no funds are available for any capital appropriations this year, and we would like to point out that one point, one, one million, one hundred and forty thousand dollars are critical items. Eighty thousand for portable radios for the police. Three hundred and thirty thousand for ten cruisers for the police. Two hundred and thirty thousand for EMS and ambulance, and five hundred thousand for the high school roof. Unable to do that, no funds are available. But this is for information to the town to realize what we've been asked to spend that we don't have. Thank you.
Thank you. To those boards, if you would, make sure that you get reports to the town clerk, because these are reports that do go into the annual town report. Madam Clerk, next article? Article twenty-three. May I have a motion?
Madam Moderator, I move that the town vote to hear and act on the report of the Community Preservation Committee on the fiscal year 2014 Community Preservation Budget, and further to reserve for future appropriation from Community Preservation Fund fiscal year 2014, estimated annual revenues the following amounts, as recommended by the Community Preservation Committee: One, thirty-seven thousand, seven hundred dollars to meet the administrative expenses and all other necessary and proper expenses of the Community Preservation Committee for the fiscal year 2014. Two, seventy-five thousand, four hundred dollars for open space reserves. Three, seventy-five thousand, four hundred dollars to historic preservation reserves. And four, seventy-five thousand, four hundred dollars to affordable housing reserves.
Do I have a second? To speak to the article?
Angela Dunham, Precinct Three, CPC chairperson. This is a housekeeping article. The committee is allowed five percent of the revenues for administrative costs, ten percent for historic preservation, ten percent for open space, and ten percent for affordable housing.
Thank you. May I have the vote of the Board of Selectmen?
Board of Selectmen voted favorable action four zero zero.
Thank you. And may I have the vote and recommendation of the Finance Committee?
The Finance Committee voted favorable action six zero two.
Thank you. To speak to the article on my right?
Eddie Percivich, Precinct One. Madam Moderator, through you, I have a question. Could we find out what the percentage was of matching funds for the CPC?
To answer the question?
Sandy Slaven, CPC. We have not received the matching funds yet for FY thirteen, but we did in FY fourteen receive close to thirty-three percent matching funds from the state.
Thank you. Gentlemen on my left?
Madam Moderator, Irving Russell, Precinct Six. Is this going to leave a balance in these accounts? Specifically, the affordable housing account? Will there be any balances?
To answer the question, if anyone can?
To answer the question, there were handouts out front. We currently have in our affordable housing reserve, four hundred and forty-two thousand, three dollars, and this would add seventy-five thousand, four hundred to that fund level.
Thank you.
Madam Moderator, I just received the handout as a little more explanatory. I thank you.
Thank you. Is there anything further to be said on article twenty-three? Seeing no one standing, I will now call for a vote. This requires a majority vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? It passes unanimously. Article twenty-eight. Article twenty-eight, may I have a motion?
Madam Moderator, I move that the town vote to approve this article as written in the warrant.
Do I have a second? To speak to the article?
First, just a point of information. There is a slight change to the motion. This was actually spurred by a question from the Animal Control Officer to me on Friday. So this happened, of course, after the printed materials went out. And upon advice of counsel, if you will turn to page twenty-three and look under Section Seven, penalties for violating the restrictions placed on dogs deemed to be dangerous or at risk. Under fourth or subsequent offense, the fine is three hundred dollars, not five hundred. This is because there is a provision in the Mass. General Laws at Chapter Forty, Section Twenty-One, that limit the fine any bylaw can impose to three hundred dollars. So after speaking with counsel, that's been changed. And also, stricken from this is the following line right below it: "All fines shall be doubled in cases involving serious human injury." So that's a change. It's up there on the board view as well.
Just a minute. We have a motion on the floor in a second. I would go to Mr. Gray to ask if he would like to rescind your motion, so that the motion would be what we have on the screen, as recommended by the Attorney General's Office. And the person who seconded it would draw their second, and then this could become our main motion.
Madam Moderator, I would like to rescind my motion, yes.
Do we have a rescission of the second? We have, okay. Would you, Mr. Gray, care to make the new motion as posted on the screen?
Yes, I, I move that the town vote to approve this article as it appears on the screen.
I have a motion before us in a second. And the article would then read, "I move to approve the bylaw as printed in the warrant, with the exception that the penalty in Section Seven for the fourth or subsequent offense be changed to three hundred dollars from five hundred dollars, and that the double penalty in the subsequent line be deleted." And the rest of it is as on the screen, and that's at the advice of the Attorney General's Office. To speak to the article?
Yes, thank you. I'm speaking now as the clerk of the Dog Bylaw Study Committee. I'd like to thank the Dog Bylaw Study Committee members, including Chairman Walter Cruz, Animal Control Officer Cheryl Gourviet-Dill, Monford Vigant, our immigration attorney, who seems to know a lot about dogs too, and also Ken Levitt. Everybody worked very hard on this. Just to go back in time, this committee was formed a year ago at Springtown Meeting in response to another bylaw that was brought forward. We worked on it during the summer. The state, for the first time in years, decided in August to amend General Laws, Chapter One Forty, which, for want of a better word, is the state dog law or the state animal law. Numerous provisions that we had worked on and had drafted were rendered obsolete or in conflict with the new law, so we had to go back to the drawing board. We asked this body for the authority to do that at the Fall Town Meeting, and we're allowed to do that. What you see before you is the finished product. Essentially, it can be boiled down to the notion that these issues are local issues and belong under local control. Presently, the Animal Control Officer, when she writes a citation, if it's not paid, she has to go to court. If she has to deal with somebody who's recalcitrant and doesn't control their dog, she has to go to court. As an attorney, I can tell you, court is a cumbersome process. You wind up going to court. The person calls in at the last minute, "I can't make it." The clerk magistrate or the judge will give them a continuance. This goes on and on and on. And every time that happens, you are paying, your Animal Control Officer, the overtime to go to court. What this does is it brings these matters before the Board of Selectmen when they are appealed, so that the Board of Selectmen deals with them. I don't know what people will do in the future, but going forward, I don't think you're going to see too many continuances being given scofflaws from the Board of Selectmen. We will hear the cases. Town Council will act as a hearing officer, to the extent that one needs to be had. And we will adjudicate the people if they then want to go to court and do so on their own dime, and go through that process. The penalties speak for themselves. We didn't include a barking and howling nuisance provision in here. The General Laws are rather nonspecific on that score, and they make it hard for people to understand exactly when their dog can bark, when their dog can't bark, how long their dog can bark, and so on and so forth. The provisions here attempt to set parameters for that. It guides both the dog owner, it will guide neighbors, whom we object to barking dogs, and it will guide the Animal Control Officer in her performance of her duties. So I would urge passage of this. Thank you.
May I have the vote of the Board of Selectmen?
Board of Selectmen voted three, one, zero.
May I have the vote and recommendation of the Finance Committee?
The Finance Committee voted favorable action seven zero zero.
Thank you. To speak to the article, gentleman on my right?
Eddie Percivich, Precinct One. I too would like to commend the Dog Committee, Bylaw Committee. I think they did a heck of a job. I have a few amendments. I have a few amendments that I think would bring the bylaw to make it consistent with the statute and other town bylaws. I have a copy of it right here.
Could you bring that up to me, please?
It's up on the screen right now. I propose to change the definition of dangerous dog to what's provided for in the statute versus what's in the bylaw. And that's simply just adding the words from the statute versus the definition in the bylaw. And Madam Moderator, I don't know if you want to vote these all at once or do them individually, any way you want.
Why don't you go through them, Mr. Percivich, while I have Town Council take a look at it? Because if this is a bylaw, we need to be absolutely sure that I can accept your amendment.
Okay. The second one is the addition of a definition of a nuisance dog that comes directly out of the statute, word for word. In Section 5, Restrictions for At-Risk Dogs, Section 4, I've deleted and replaced it with, "After two years of compliance, the hearing authority shall make a determination of whether the dog should be considered at risk," versus it just being automatic. I know you had some changes, but I've deleted Section 8, Penalties for Violation of Restrictions Placed on Dogs Deemed to be Dangerous or at Risk. The statute provides for penalties for noncompliance of the hearing authority, and that's the only way you could get a restriction placed on a dangerous dog is through a hearing authority. So I've changed that to penalties for violation of this bylaw, and it reads, warning, $50, $60, $100. That's also provided for in the statute.
Madam Moderator, point of information?
State your point.
Are these changes significant enough so it changes the entire scope of this article?
That's what we're trying to determine, Mr. McDonald. I'm going to let him finish, and we're trying to determine whether they are.
Okay, I've changed the howling nuisance from 20 minutes to 10 minutes. In the various bylaws that I looked in various towns around here, specifically Bourne and Barnstable, they had 10 minutes, not 20 minutes. I couldn't find a bylaw that had 20 minutes in it. The penalties for barking, howling dog, I did away with that 12-month period and changed the fines to be consistent with the statute. And then I added one other issue, and that's the moving of dangerous dogs, which seem to appear in almost all of the dog bylaws in the various towns around here, and that's a dog designated as dangerous in another town or municipality may not be relocated to or permitted to be kept within the town of Wareham. So basically, these changes are taking our bylaw and making it consistent with the statute, which is required by the statute, that if there's any bylaws written in the town, they have to be consistent with the statute itself.
Okay, Mr. Percivich, with consultation with Town Council, this is within the scope of the article. In the future, though, I really would suggest that if something like this, when we have an article that is so cumbersome, that you get these motions to the moderator at least 48 hours ahead of time so that we can have them and have a chance to review them, so we're not doing it on the floor. Secondly, the Dog Bylaw Study Committee met continuously for a long period of time, and it would have been really helpful to them if maybe you had brought these concerns to them as well. But it is within the scope of the article. It is within the scope of the bylaw. So I think the best approach to take would be to have you speak to your... Do I have a second on his motion? Have a second. To have you speak to the reasons why you feel that these amendments should be included, and then we'll go back and take them one by one.
Madam Moderator, I'd like to take this opportunity to apologize. We just finished these... I just finished these amendments this afternoon. So sorry we didn't get a chance. If it was done earlier, I would have tried to get to it. I don't know, the first one, Definition of Dangerous Dogs, the statute says that if a person's attacked, causing physical injury, the bylaw says that any dog that has without clear provocation significantly bitten or attacked a human being resulting in significant physical injury or death. Now, that's a lot more narrow in scope than what the statute says. So the statute could say there's a dangerous dog by their definition, and it would not be a dangerous dog under the bylaw provision. That's why they were changed. A nuisance dog is addressed in the statute. We had no reference to nuisance dogs. I added it. The restrictions for an at-risk dog, basically, the bylaw, the proposed bylaw, just made it an automatic occurrence versus somebody taking a look at it. It's all I added, was the hearing authority would make the determination after two years. Penalties for violations of restrictions placed on dogs deemed to be dangerous or at risk. And we had a list. The statute provides for the first offense of noncompliance of an order from a hearing authority is a fine of up to $500 and 60 days in jail or both. I think the bylaw reads... First offense is $50. Second offense under the statute is a fine of not more than $1,000 and 90 days in jail. Second offense in the bylaw says $100. So this is bringing it in. I changed it since the statute deals with penalties for violating restrictions on dangerous dogs. In other words, noncompliance of a hearing authority order, it's already taken care of. I changed this to just being a general penalties against the bylaw. Those figures of warning, $50, $60, and subsequent offenses at $100 are also provided for in the statute. It's all I did, was copy them in from the statute. The howling nuisance is something that I changed. It's not addressed in the statute. The bylaw proposed 20 minutes. I changed it to 10 because I couldn't find another bylaw in any town area around here that had 20 minutes. They all had 10. And that specifically includes Bourne and Barnstable. I had to change the fines as proposed in the bylaw because the fine for the second offense is $25, and the statute define for a bylaw under this section is $50. Same thing for the third. And then we added, because it seemed to be pretty consistent in all of the various town bylaws that I looked at, that they had this particular article in here that did not allow a dangerous dog to be relocated or permitted to be kept within their town. And that's consistent. There's nothing that's addressed in the statute regarding that. And the only reason I'm raising all of these and suggesting these changes is so that we can get... We're in dire need of getting an up-to-date...
30 seconds.
...dog bylaw. And this will hopefully expedite the process through the Attorney General's Office, and we'll end up getting a viable dog bylaw.
Mr. McDonald, to speak to Mr. Percivich's motion?
Yes, and first I want to ask the previous speaker a question. Were these changes you make brought to town meeting previously in a bylaw?
No.
Well, I would urge you to defeat the amendment. The first reason is this committee has worked long and hard and put together, and I think completely vetted, a set of bylaws that are, I think, clearer and easier to understand. And to come up at the last minute and make major changes like this is really, I think, is unacceptable. I think we... That is why they have open public meetings for you to attend and make your suggestions at that point. So I would urge you to defeat this amendment.
Selectmen Titlebaum?
Thank you. Through you to the second previous speaker and the proponent of the amendment. I would say that the issues with the fine schedule, there is a provision in Chapter 140, I forget exactly where it is, which section, which does allow a municipality that adopts its own bylaws to regulate dogs to set its own fine schedule. So there is no inconsistency with the state here. If you choose to not have a town bylaw regulating dogs, then you got to go by the state fine schedule. But in the event that you do set one, so long as you stick within the parameters that we found out under General Laws, Chapter 40, Section 21, that says you can't fine more than $300, you're okay. So to that point, that's to address that. The other thing of consequence here, really, that I think the body should know, is that in looking at various other municipalities on the duration by which dogs were allowed to bark, I believe Carver, and if you look at any rural towns out in the western part of the state, you'll find that they have an hour-long barking time, if you will. So with that in mind, I think 20 minutes was a fair compromise between sort of the... Well, I don't want to tire our neighbors, but to say the NIMBY attitudes you might find over the bridge and our traditional rural character here.
30 seconds.
So I would urge you to vote down the amendments and stick with it as it is. Thank you.
Is there anything further to be said on Mr. Percivich's amendment?
Madam Moderator?
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Russell. Sorry, I didn't see you.
Madam Moderator, Irvin Russell, Precinct 6. Yes, I would be in favor of defeating this amendment, and I was curious as to that moving of dangerous dogs, would that prohibit a commercial entity from operating within town that would train or discipline, provide obedience training? Does that say that no businesses of obedience could be established in town? But I would, just without answer to that question, I would ask that this amendment be defeated.
Thank you. Is there anything further to be said? If not, I will review with you Mr. Percivich's changes, and I know they're cumbersome, and I know it's difficult to follow along. What Mr. Percivich and Matt, maybe if you can follow along, and if I can keep myself straight. In Section 1 definitions, under dangerous dogs, which is at the bottom, I think it might be at the bottom of your warrant, he would like to delete numbers 1, 2, and 3. And in number 1, insert, "Without justification, attacks a person or domestic animal causing physical injury or death." Or, and number 2, change it to read, "Behaves in a manner that a reasonable person would believe poses an unjustified imminent threat of physical injury or death to a person or to a domestic or owned animal." And then the following numbers, number 4 would change to number 3, and number 5 would change to number 4. Under definitions... He would add nuisance dogs. A dog that, number 1, by excessive barking or other disturbances, is a source of annoyance to a sick person residing in the vicinity. Or, number 2, by excessive barking causing damage or other interferences, a reasonable person would find such behavior disruptive to one's quiet and peaceful enjoyment. Or, number 3, has threatened or attacked livestock, a domestic animal, or a person, but such threat or attack was not grossly disproportionate reaction under all the circumstances. And then, under 5, Restrictions for At-Risk Dogs, he would delete Section 4, "After two years of compliance, the dog shall no longer be considered at risk," and add instead, "After two years of compliance, the hearing authority shall make a determination of whether the dog should be considered at risk." In Section 7, Penalties for Violating the Restrictions Placed on Dogs Deemed to be Dangerous, he would delete Section 7 and add a new Section 7, Penalties for Violation of this bylaw. Except as otherwise established in statute or this bylaw, penalties for the violation of this bylaw are as follows. The first offense would be a warning. The second offense would be $50. The third offense would be $60. And the fourth or subsequent offense would be $100. And in Section 8, Barking/Howling Nuisance, under number 2, he would delete 20 minutes and add 10 minutes. In Section 9, Penalties for Barking and Howling Nuisance, he would delete the words, "Within any 12-month period, all occurrences," and delete second offense a $25 fine and add second offense a $50 fine, and delete the third offense a $50 fine and insert a $60 fine. In Article 10, Moving Dangerous Dogs, dogs designated as dangerous in another town or municipality may not be relocated to or permitted to be kept within the town of Wareham. I will now call for a vote on Mr. Percivich's amendment. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed? Mr. Percivich's amendment fails. We are now back to the original motion that is before you on the screen. Is there anything to be said on the original motion? On my right?
Mike Paul, Precinct 2. I just have a question, which is that the proposed bylaw makes it clear that when dogs attack domestic animals or owned animals, that's when they can be deemed dangerous. And I noticed wildlife is excluded, and whether that's covered under an additional state statute?
To answer the question?
Just briefly, and I think we reported this back in the fall as well. The dog laws of Massachusetts date back to Puritan times in some regards. There are sanctions under General Laws, Chapter 140, for dogs that worry deer. There are any number of oddball provisions in that law. In fact, if you wanted some interesting reading, go take a look at it sometime. And frankly, that law, as the legislature, even with their recent amendments, and I think I see the Animal Control Officer nodding, is still the strangest hodgepodge of things you ever saw in your life. However, there are some provisions in there that do happen to deal with dogs that run loose, that worry livestock, that attack deer.
loose, that worry livestock, that attack deer, and things of that nature. And again, remember, any dog that's running loose and attacking animals off of its property is already subject to the animal control officer's jurisdiction for violation of the leash law.
Thank you. On my left?
Donna Ashley, Precinct Six. I want to commend the Dog Committee for the great job they did. I've gone over this and over this and over this, trying to see if I understand it all. I have two Chihuahuas and one puppy yellow lab at two years old who still thinks she's a puppy. And so I want to make sure I'm in compliance with this. I have one concern, and that is in the barking dog part of it. I think your dangerous dogs, and that article was fantastically done. I unfortunately had a dog who, no matter what I did and tried to do, there was nothing, and we finally had to make a very difficult decision. But my concern is that some of us live, unfortunately, around, say, one or two people, and I'm specifically not saying where I live, but do nothing but like to call people on if your dog barks because she wants to get out of their carrier or she wants something to eat. And my concern is in the timing. My dog goes in her carrier at eight o'clock at night. I don't hear from her until six or sometimes before seven. But if the sun comes up earlier, I can't convince her. But my concern is if you have one of those people in your neighborhood and they learn that there is this, is this something that... I don't know if I'm making sense here, but I'm really... I keep my dogs under control, and I just don't want her to bark a couple of minutes too long and have this nice lady come visit my house.
Well...
Just a minute, Mr. Titelbaum. I'm not sure is there a specific question, or are you just making a general statement?
There is a question into how stringent that barking part is, if they're barking in your own home, perhaps because they think it's time to get up and you haven't heard them yet, or I have... If you have a couple of people around that might like to get onto that once they know this is here.
To answer...
So, yeah, there is a question.
To answer the question, Mr. Selectmen Titelbaum?
Well, as an owner of two pretty noisy dogs myself, I too have concerns about this. I don't want to be the first person to hit the jackpot within the first year. But anyway, I think your question might, if the animal control officer would be so willing, to talk about the enforcement aspect, since she's the one who would be performing that. Madam Moderator, if that's appropriate to defer to?
To answer the question...
Yes.
...only, and to the specifics of the question, not to stand up and talk to the entire bylaw and all of the ramifications should somebody violate any part of it, but to answer specifically Mrs. Ashley's question.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, to answer the question. Under the state law, there is reference to barking dogs. So we get the calls, whether we have this bylaw or not. They're still going to call. I just want to say that with the bylaw, we'll have more clarity, and I think we'll have an easier time dealing with these ongoing barking issues. So the issues are there. Whether or not we have the bylaw, the bylaw is just going to help us deal with the issues.
Thank you. Is there anything further to be said on Article 28? Seeing no one else standing, I now will call for a vote on Article 28. The motion is before you. To approve the bylaw is printed in the warrant with the exception that the penalty in Section Seven for a fourth or subsequent offense be changed to $300 from $500. The motion is before you. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
Passes by a majority. Ladies and gentlemen, we are approaching the hour of ten o'clock. We could try to take one more, and when ten o'clock comes, we'll have to cease in the middle of it, or I would entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting till tomorrow evening at seven o'clock. Seven PM. So moved. I'm sorry. Wait a minute, we've got... You're speaking on my right?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. I was getting up to make a motion to adjourn till tomorrow evening at 7:00 PM.
Do we have a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It passes. We can't do it in five minutes. We will continue tomorrow night with the five articles. Nine, nine, one.